Good evening, folks. Welcome to City Hall for tonight's City Council meeting and Committee of the Whole meeting. The City Council meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our clerk in standing, Ms. Dawkins, to please take the role.
Bowring, here. Bruno?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Patchkey?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Cosrog?
Here.
Meladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We have a full house tonight. We begin our City Council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and today happens to be Alder Person Kilburg's birthday. So he is celebrating with us, with us.
All day.
Thank you, Dean. Item 3A, folks, is to introduce Business Operations Specialist Alyssa Chudzik, Utility Locator George Augustine, and Code Compliance Officer Colin Miller. Let's begin with our friend Alyssa. Alyssa, come on up. Now, you and I had a chat beforehand. Right there at the podium would be great. Security, please don't approach me.
Yeah, sure, okay.
Thank you very much.
(laughing).
You should know about your Tricom.
Yeah.
Or were Tricom.
Were Tricom.
Holy moly, man. You worked for Tricom for 14 years.
I did.
And Alyssa and I were talking before the meeting, and she worked at the old place. Does anyone know where the old place was?
Yep. Yep.
No? The old Tricom? Does anybody know? Dare I say? You used the word cozy.
(laughing) It was very cozy.
It was literally behind the finance department in the police station. Oh, no, no, she... Are you talking about... I mean, that was a tiny, 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 tiny place.
It was very small, yes.
Unbelievable.
Yes.
And then you had the pleasure of moving out to the new location, which we cannot state in public where that is for security reasons.
Correct.
But it does have an open river underneath.
It does, yes. It was complimentary.
Complimentary to the river?
Yeah, included in the price.
Wow. How are the kids doing? Good?
The kids are good.
Yeah?
I have a 16-year-old. Yeah, so I have a driver, which frees up my schedule a lot.
Oh, so the license is already...
Yep, oh, yeah.
How's it going? Good?
It's going good.
Yeah?
Yes, so, very good, so.
Do we have... Is it... You said she?
Yes.
Do we have her license plate on file at the police station?
(laughing) Yes.
Yes. In 2022, check this out, I rode my bicycle across Wisconsin.
I did, yes. I wanted to actually ride across Iowa.
Is that the rag ride in Iowa?
Rag ride, right. But because of children, you know, it's kind of hard to take a week off.
They get in the way.
They do, they do. So I decided to do the weekend ride across Wisconsin instead. So 100 miles one day and then like 120-something or 30-something the second day.
You had others with you?
I... Yes, it was like an organized ride.
Oh, wow, so it was like a fundraising event kind of?
Well, not fundraising, but, I mean, just self-torture.
Just kind of a call for weirdos who want to ride across Wisconsin?
Right, yes, yes, and wear cow print.
And you camped out or did you stay in a...
Oh, no, I did stay, sleep in a bed, yeah, no camping.
No camping.
That's a little too rustic for me.
Does your dream still include the rag ride?
Yep, yep, I still want to do that, so.
That is decades, decades old.
Yeah, it's like 50... I think they just had their 50th.
Yeah, isn't that something?
Yeah.
Wow.
So.
Huge.
Yeah, it's different routes every year. Yeah.
Now, you... Do you ride all the time then?
I would not say all the time, no. So it was a COVID hobby.
Oh, a COVID hobby.
Yeah, well, actually, my husband, he's the real insane one. He likes to do Ironman races, so...
That is insane.
And then I was like, well, I want to do something with you, but I don't like running and I don't like swimming.
I was gonna say, I'd ride a bike.
So I'll ride a bike.
Yeah. What kind of bike do you have?
Um, it's a Bianchi, yeah, a Bianchi. So it was used.
Is that a good bike?
That's a good bike.
That's a good bike. Do you know who that gentleman is?
Oh, no.
Yeah, he's... He used to ride, but he was passed to stop.
(laughing).
That's the owner of Mill Rice Cyclero.
Oh, okay.
This guy knows his bikes.
He knows his bikes.
So a Bianchi?
Yes.
Good stuff.
Yes.
Is it... Is it... Does it have like a... One of those bars in the banana seat?
Yes.
Does it?
And tassels on the handlebars.
And tassels, well done, nicely played, good job. Favorite family vacations are snow skiing in Utah.
Yep, just got back.
This year? You did?
We go, yeah, we go every year.
When were you there? Like, like, like just recently?
Yeah, like two weeks ago. We went... The kids had school, like a three-and-a-half-day weekend, so we went out, went skiing for three days.
What, what...
We go to Alta, so we stay...
See, that's not near Salt Lake, is it?
Yeah.
It is?
Yes, so we actually...
You've been there?
We drive down like the canyon every day, so we...
Oh, my gosh.
We are not rich enough to live or to stay like up in the mountain, but...
Did you stay at the Marriott in Salt Lake?
It was a Hyatt, the Hyatt place, right at the bottom of the canyon. Great place.
No injuries?
No injuries. My dad, who's 72, he went with us, too.
He's young?
Yeah, so.
Wow, that's wonderful.
Yep.
He's young, right, Dean?
Just a babe.
Just... Just a babe. And you also like to go to Indian Rocks Beach in Florida. Where the heck is that?
Um, just south of Clearwater.
Oh, okay.
So my parents, they retired down there.
Yeah.
And so we had a really nice place to go and visit, and then they decided to move to central Florida, which is not by the beach. So we were like, well, guess we'll still go to the beach.
That's probably a message you should heed.
Yes.
And you've been on board since... Good lord, actually, December 30th of 2023. No. No, October 30th.
October 30th.
Excuse me, 2023.
Yes, yes.
We've all received emails from you?
Yes, you have.
Every time something goes, yeah, something goes haywire?
Yes.
Last, yeah. Yeah, oh, my. Yeah, that was exciting. Life in Tricom compared to life at Public Works?
Oh, wow.
Summarize that in 10 minutes or less.
Totally different.
Totally different, yeah.
Totally different.
Are the people different at Public Works?
I was actually very surprised.
Ooh, just stop right there.
(laughing). Um, how similar the calls kind of are.
Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, so, just a little different, but there's still a lot of people who need assistance, and I'm happy to provide it.
Well, we all... We often do get compliments regarding the good customer service, as it were, and I know sometimes you deal with some tense situations, too, so it's gotta be very trying.
Yeah.
Yeah, wow. So what else should we know about you?
Oh, goodness.
Where's home?
Home is Geneva.
Yep.
On the west side.
So your daughter is a junior?
She's sophomore.
Oh, so she's older.
Yes.
Life is good.
Well, I have a younger one, too.
Yeah.
So I have a nine-year-old as well.
Oh, my God, and what school does your nine-year-old attend?
She goes to Heartland.
Oh, nice.
Yes.
Well, that's fun.
Yes, so.
Cool.
Yeah.
And did you grow up in Geneva?
I did not. I grew up in Naperville.
Naperville? What's high school?
Uh, Wobonzie.
Oh, wow.
So I was... Well, I lived right down the street from Niqua, but...
And then they did the boundary change.
Yeah, I was, uh... I was at... I missed the cutoff by a year because it was freshmen and sophomores only, so... And I was a junior when they opened it.
Oh, my gosh.
So I had to... But that's totally different over there.
That was the ends of the earth.
It was, it was.
Right next to Rush Copley, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Kind of close by there.
But I don't... It wasn't... I mean, maybe it was built... I don't really remember it, so... That was... It was that long ago.
Was it that long ago, yeah? And your daughter...
It was cornfields.
Does your daughter drive to school?
She does.
Nice. And she parks in the Burgess Lot?
She does, yeah.
That's a... That's a hike, isn't it?
That is a hike.
I know, isn't that terrible?
It is, it is, but...
Does she drive a nicer car than yours?
Than when I was a kid? Oh, yes.
Isn't that something?
My... My one... My window in my car, well, was a crank, of course, right? Because, I mean...
Crank it?
Yeah, and then if it... If you rolled it down too low, it would fall out of the track. So then you'd have to... I had a screwdriver in my car, then I'd have to let...
This is way too much information.
(laughing) It's a good story. Kids these days don't understand.
Oh, God, no.
There was no remotes, that everything was... So anyway.
All AM radio?
No, it did have FM. Obvious, no CD player or like tape player or anything like that.
8-track player, probably.
No, no, it wasn't that old.
Thank you.
(laughing).
I'd like to open up the floor now for fear of what I might say, so, hey, we're delighted to have you on board.
Yeah, glad to be back.
And I know it's been a while, so it's so nice to see you in person, and thank you for your great work.
Yes, I'm glad... I'm very happy to be back with the city, so...
And it's mulch season, so you see a lot of people coming over to get their mulch?
Yes, come stop by and say hi.
Do you see the guy with his riding mower brings over?
You know what? I actually was going to lunch the other day and saw him...
Isn't he a character?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know where he cruises it from, but he cruises over in his riding mower and he pulls a bunch of... Lifts them, puts them...
Yep.
It's fascinating, yeah. That's not me.
(laughing).
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Again, elatedly, and thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
George?
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's very nice to be here with you. My name's George Augustine. I started back also on October 31st. I took over Scott Renner's position as the Utility Locator for the city.
Okay, thank you. Next person is gonna be...
That's it, I'm good.
This... This young man lives in Woodbridge, Illinois?
Yes, sir. He's been there since August of last year.
With your lovely wife and two girls?
Yes, three and one.
Three and one?
Yes, it's a crazy household.
Oh, my... So are you delighted to be here tonight, or are you...
Yes, oh, yes. Time away from the kids.
And what... May I ask their names?
Reagan and Kennedy.
Oh, my gosh, no kidding. That's a bipartisan household right there, isn't it?
Yes, yes, it is.
Wow. And just a quick question for the Director of Public Works, Mr. Bab... Are these new uniforms for the utility locators? I'll say, oh, me.
They wouldn't stay this way that long, so...
No? Now, all of you basketball fans know this school, particularly women's basketball, but our friend George attended Montini Catholic High School in Lombard.
Yes, I do.
Yeah. You were the catcher on the baseball.
I was, second string, so I wasn't that good.
So you only caught like half the balls coming in or whatever?
Yeah, right, yes.
When did you graduate?
2017.
No kidding?
So...
Did you hear the gasps?
Yes.
(laughing). Attended Montini Catholic High School, completed 68 credit hours for construction management...
Yes.
At the College of DuPage, working to finish Associate's Degree and Recertification for Illinois State Certified Home Inspector License.
Yes, sir.
That's cool. That's a... That's a tough gig, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah.
It is.
Man. In the utility locating field for four years. You started with USIC. We see their trucks everywhere.
Yes, I started down in Abilene, Texas, and I did it out there for two and a half years.
What were you doing down there?
Uh, my wife was active-duty Air Force.
Oh, my gosh.
She was a B-1 bomber-engine mechanic, so we were out there for four years while she was active duty.
Well, please thank her for her service.
I will, thank you.
That's amazing. So you married up?
I did.
Yeah, well done, man. You've located facilities for all major providers in the area, and we see those trucks everywhere.
They are everywhere, very big company.
Yeah, huge company. What was your day like there? I think it had to be 12, 15-hour days.
It was usually 12-hour days, six days a week, usually in the summer when it picked up.
Really? Enlisted in the US Army Reserve in 2018.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Served four years as a heavy equipment operator. What kind of equipment does that entail?
Uh, hydraulic excavators, scrapers, graders, backhoe loaders.
Wow. One and a half years as a horizontal construction sergeant. Now, you gotta explain that, man.
Uh, that's just troop management, project management, going higher up in the enlisted realm, usually just taking care of projects, finances for the project.
Wow. And certainly not most impressive, but equally as impressive, and I think all of us will be impressed by this, deployed to Iraq in 2022 and 2023.
Yes, sir.
In support of Operation Inherent Resolve.
Yes, sir.
What an experience, huh?
It was.
And may I ask, where was your wife at that time?
Uh, she was in Texas with the kids.
Okay.
So she did all the heavy lifting with them while they were little.
Unbelievable. A military household.
It is.
Do you have military family members as well?
No, sir.
Really?
Yes.
What was your inspiration to join the Army Reserve?
A lot of people like to say to get education, but I just wanted to serve my country.
That is really cool. Really cool. And your wife's the same philosophy, or is it...
Yes, sir.
Wow. Now, according to... You made these notes up?
I did.
I'm just reading them.
It's perfect.
So this could be all nonsense.
It's all true.
Okay. Enjoy spending free time with family, is that...
Yes, as much time as I can with them.
And completing construction projects around the house. Now, we have some construction professionals on the dais here, too. You're more than a handyman.
Yes.
You're a handy person, you can do everything and anything.
I like to think so.
What are you working on now?
Uh, closet doors for all the rooms, reframing, drywall.
Wow. Are the... So the girls are probably excited to have a door on their closet?
Yes, plenty of room for their toys, because they get an abundance of toys all the time.
From whom?
Uh, grandparents, very spoiled, and I'm sure the wife is tired of having tools laying all over the house.
Oh, my gosh. And you've always been... You've always had that penchant of being so talented and fixing things and working on things?
I love to work on things, fix things, anything I can get my hands on. If I stop one project, another one starts, and I can't stop going.
So you're the typical handy person whose house is always in disarray, but everyone else's house looks good?
Yes, sir.
There you go. I like that. What else should we know about you, George?
Um, besides that, I'm happy to be with the city.
We're delighted you're here.
Uh, I really like the utility locating field since I started back in 2020, and then coming over to the city. The hours are amazing, I can spend more time with the kids at home, and I can do something I like to do for work.
And what time do you kick off in the morning?
Uh, we usually leave the shop around 7:00 and get back around 3:15, so the whole day. And since it's, uh, dig season starting up now, lots more tickets are coming in, so we're gonna get pretty busy.
I bet. It is a nice balance in life, isn't it?
It is, yes, sir.
And you... You get out of here about quarter to four, so what's the traffic like to get back to...
Usually no traffic for me, 25 minutes down 88 to 3:55, and I'm right off the expressway.
And that's at the speed limit, or is it...
That is at the speed limit, sir, yes.
Sure it is, George. That's pretty cool. Floor is open. Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
October 30th, so it's been a while, too.
Yes, it has.
That's cool. So now you're getting your first summer?
Yes.
Wow. Were you called into duty after the tornado struck, just to make certain that all things were identified prior to trees being ripped out and all that stuff?
It was pretty busy for locating after that with all the fence replacements and...
Isn't that something?
Everything off of Pepper Valley. It was pretty crazy.
It was very crazy. Well, we're delighted to have you on board.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Say hi to the misses and the kids.
I will, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our last special guest there, where's Colin? Colin, how are you, man? This gentleman started on February 26th as our new Code Compliance Officer.
Yeah, brand new.
You are brand new. Now, who knows where Elroy, Wisconsin is? That's where...
Nobody, really.
No, isn't that something?
Usually I get this one.
Yeah, that's where you grew up, man.
Yeah, you kind of know the area, yeah.
Yeah, 45 minutes west of Wisconsin Dells.
Yeah.
Were you like a character at the Dells for any years, or were you...
Uh, we spent a lot of time in the Dells when I was a kid, yeah, yeah.
You called Naperville home?
Yeah.
With your fiancee Darby?
Mm-hmm.
Getting married Memorial Day weekend of 2025?
That's right.
It's hard to find a spot, isn't it?
Uh, we've got a venue already.
Do you?
We have venues, working on a caterer next, and kind of taking one thing at a time.
Where's the venue?
It's, uh...
And what time do things kickoff?
Do you want an invitation?
No, no, I'd prefer not to go. I want to make sure I'm... I want to make sure I'm busy.
Okay.
You being married in Naperville?
What's that?
Are you gonna be married in Naperville?
No, we're getting married out of a farm in Newark.
Newark, Illinois?
Yep.
Now, who knows the history of the former mayor of Newark? He was the barber in Geneva on State Street for...
28 years.
28 years. You know that?
I did not know that, no.
Newark's a great place, man.
We disliked the venue we found out there. Just happened to work out, and it's near her family, too, so...
Yeah, that's enough. Thanks for popping my bubble, man. I was kind of excited about talking about Newark.
I got nothing for you, sorry.
Okay, you've been together with Darby for four years, and she is currently in her fourth year at medical school.
That's right, yeah.
Is she at Midwestern by chance?
She is, yeah.
Okay, so she's gonna be a doctor of osteopathic medicine.
That's great, yeah.
Isn't that cool?
It is.
I was the alumni director and fundraising chair for Midwestern for years.
Oh, really?
And helped open up their campus in Arizona.
Okay, very cool.
So, wow. Does she know her specialty yet?
Yep, she's gonna be a pathologist.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
And of course, match day was just held. Did she, did she match?
No, she's got... They don't have match day until next year.
Until next year, okay.
Yeah.
Match day is a huge thing.
I know, I've heard all about it.
Oh, and everyone knows that match day is of course...
It's on our calendar.
When you graduate medical school, you're matched with, it's, it's phenomenal. You select three choices, you hopefully get the top one, but...
Hope you get your top one, yeah.
Isn't that wild?
Yeah.
Now, how did you and Darby meet? Don't say Newark.
We did not meet on New, at Newark, no, we actually met on Tinder, believe it or not.
Erase the tape, please. Well, that's cool, and, and this Tinder thing, what is that? That's how we found Ben, to be the Assistant City Minister.
Oh, really?
Tinder for municipalities. You have a cat named Sox?
That's right.
And would like to get a dog when they move to a larger home.
Yeah, the cat doesn't like dogs so much, so we'd rather not deal with this trust.
Whose cat is it?
It's her cat, well, it's our cat now, but...
Well said. Went to UW-Lacrosse, majored in political science and public administration.
Mm-hmm.
Before starting at Geneva, was the code enforcement inspector, and we, I knew this, of course, at Kane County.
Oh, you did?
Of course.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't live in Geneva, I live in a county, for God's sake, it's just, I can... For a year before that, I had temporary position with Naperville Code Enforcement. The county, a county and a municipality are worlds apart.
Yeah, I'm, I'm starting to, I'm starting to get to know that, yeah.
Yeah, isn't that, isn't that wild? Wow.
Yeah.
Now, you like to read and cook.
Yep. I do all the cooking at home.
You do?
Yeah.
What's your specialty?
My specialty? I guess my, I hear my ranch chicken is really good, so I guess that.
Who, who, Darby tell you that?
Yeah.
Well...
I, she swears she's not just, not being generous, too, but she says it's pretty good.
Hmm. And I trust you've sampled a lot of the restaurants here in town?
A couple of them, yeah.
That's good to hear. And what, what kind of literature do you like to read? Are you a biography guy, are you a fiction, nonfiction?
I've started reading a bit more history and nonfiction recently, but, but before that, it was all fiction.
Yeah. Well, as a political science guy, you must love the history stuff, right?
Yeah.
Favorite book, well, here it is, George Orwell, why is that, why is George Orwell's your favorite book?
Uh, Nineteen and Four in particular, I mean, it's, it's kinda strange to say I like it so much because it's depressing, which is weird to say. Um, I wouldn't say it's like an enjoyable book.
This is a nice selection we made for the...
Yeah, right?
You'll do really well in code enforcement.
Yeah, right?
It is often cited nowadays, too, isn't it?
Yeah, definitely.
George Orwell stuff, yeah. Have you read it more than once?
Nope, just the ones.
Just the ones.
I don't reread too many books.
No?
I've got a lot of stuff that I still haven't read, so I try to read them once and move on.
Nice, man. So what else should we know about you, Colin? We're delighted to have you onboard, that's for sure.
Thanks, I'm happy to be here. Um, I don't know, there's not too much else to tell. Yeah, I've been down here for about four years, moved down here to be with my fiancee when she started medical school, lived Naperville since then. Uh, before that, I lived, I actually grew up on a dairy farm.
You did, in Elroy?
Wisconsin. Yep.
In Elroy, okay.
In Elroy, yeah.
How big of a farm was it?
Oh, I couldn't tell you how, how big exactly it was, um, it was a small farm, though. It was just my grandpa and, just my grandpa and his wife that ran it together.
Is that right?
Yeah, it was a pretty small farm.
In the family forever kinda thing?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Fortunately, when he passed, um, we didn't, there was kind of a dispute between the siblings what to do with it, so it didn't, they're, it's not used as a farm anymore.
Ah, okay.
But, uh, prior to that, I've been the family for a long time.
Well, that's pretty cool, man.
Yeah.
And you, you've, you've been onboard a what?
What's that?
You've been onboard for what, ten days?
Uh, I think a little more than that, it's, this is my third week.
Wow.
Not much longer than ten days, but yeah.
And you know all the streets?
Oh, yeah, I've got them, all memorized already.
Are you familiar with Dempsey Court?
Dempsey Court? Can't say I've heard that before, not yet.
No, I, I know you don't, I know you, but it's, it's near you, though.
I'm sure I'll be good, I'll get familiar with it.
I'm sure you will, yeah. Talk to Alderperson Mayor on the way up, so...
All right.
Floor is open, anyone for Colin? Pretty cool, man.
All right.
Were you busy the next day during the tornado or after the tornado?
A bit, yeah. I think Brian was even busier than me.
Oh, yeah, I know he was, yeah, holy moly. Brian, you're a good choice, man.
Thank you.
And thank you for your enthusiasm, that's exciting. Indeed, indeed.
Yeah, yeah, I actually just had lunch with my predecessor today.
Oh, did you?
Jim, yeah.
Good, yeah.
Yeah.
Jim's a good guy.
Yeah.
We're, we're delighted to have you onboard. Welcome. And, uh, we'll see you, uh, Memorial Day weekend on the twenty-fifth in Newark.
All right, I'll give invitations for everybody, thanks.
Oh, we don't need them.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, you'll just be there.
Yeah, we'll just be there.
Perfect.
Yeah, exactly, we did know the mayor. And by all means, George and Colin and Alyssa, sneak out, get out. You especially, you got two little ones waiting for you. So get the heck out of here, man. Item four, amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments? Item five is the omnibus agenda, all items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and those items can be considered with one motion. Is there such a motion?
Second.
Motion by Kocarog, seconded by Patchkey. Clerk Dawkins, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Melodra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero alderpersons absent, the omnibus agenda has been approved. We jump to item number eight, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our clerk, Ms. Dawkins, to read the bills in their aggregate.
Uh, municipal bills for payment total three million, five hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read, the individual items that add up to that amount can be found at tonight's city council packet on the city website.
Alderperson Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented. The individual amounts are available on the website and in each alderperson's packet. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mayor?
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Melodra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
With a vote of ten of the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero absent, the bills for payment have been approved by this council. Item ten, ten A to be exact, is to consider resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six, authorizing the publication of the City of Geneva zoning map. Motion by Mayor, seconded by Patchkey. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so Illinois state statutes require that the city annually publish updates to the official zoning map. The resolution for consideration and attached in your packet, the zoning map was prepared to satisfy this requirement. The updated zoning map incorporates annexations, zoning map amendments, and planned unit developments that have been formally approved by the city council since March of twenty twenty-three. And we do have Director DeGroot with us if you have any additional questions.
Are there any questions for Director DeGroot? Seeing none, sensing none, and hearing none, roll call vote would be in order. Ms. Dawkins?
Ruby?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Melodra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
The resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six, authorizing the publication of City of Geneva zoning map, has been approved with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Red item eleven, folks, public comment, anyone joining us this evening who wishes to speak to, provide information for, the city council is welcome to do so at this time.